Good afternoon. We'd like to welcome you to our workshop meeting today. We appreciate all those that are here in attendance. We're going to begin with a pledge of allegiance and that will be led by Board Member Kristin Hogan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We get to begin our board meeting tonight with a visit from North Layton Junior High School. We're looking forward to that. So I'll go ahead and turn the time over to Mr. Rick Astle, who'll be introducing that team.
President Gerard, Board Members, Superintendent Linford, and our newcomer, Mr. Leffler. Just, I'm excited to be able to stand here today and to share with you some of the great things that are going on at North Layton Junior High and invite them to come forward and to do that. But I know they're going to talk to you a little bit about their summer program held with Ohio State University, their summer sports, summer program that they did. Also going to talk a little bit about their AP success and their computer science and foreign language, Spanish. And also talk a little bit about their outreach program that they've got going on at North Layton Junior High. So let me introduce you to their Principal Corby Eason, Vice Principals Heather Bauer and Brant Shaw, and their intern, Tasha Miller. And I'll turn the time over to Corby to start with that. So thank you.
Welcome, everybody. Like first and foremost, I'd like to thank y'all for this opportunity to allow my team and I to share all the great things that we are doing at North Layton Junior High. First and foremost, I want y'all to know the approach that we take every day. It's the approach that we do more than expected. So I was always taught by a wise coach, Bronco Minnehall, that average people meet the standard, good people exceed the standard, and great people set the standard. And so that's the approach that we take at North Layton Junior High. We are looking at any ways that we can serve everyone, that's student, a parent, by setting the standard of how they should be taken care of when they walk in our school building. So as Mr. Astle said, we're going to kind of share, I have each of my assistants share some of the highlights that we do at North Layton, something we do well. And so I'm turning time over to Tasha Miller.
Thank you, Board Members. We're excited to have the chance to come and talk to all of you today about some of the amazing things that are happening at North Layton Junior High. I get the honor to talk to you about some of our academic excellence that we have going on. There were a couple of things I wanted to highlight. First, at North Layton Junior High, we are one of a few junior highs that offer three AP courses at the junior high level. One of those is our human geography course, one of them is a Spanish language AP course, and one of them is a computer science principles AP course. Our computer science principles has done exceptionally well over the last several years. And in fact, our teacher, Mr. Stephen Olson, was recently recognized by the College Board in Utah for his excellence in those AP tests and those AP scores, as well as our Spanish language increasing over 4% in the last year, and our human geography course doing very, very well and rising year after year. We also wanted to highlight some of the things we do for some of our more, some of our students that struggle a little bit more. We have some student success coaches that meet with, this year, they have met with every single seventh grader in the first few weeks of school to make contact, let them know that they are there to support them. They've also been working with, as this term ends, every ninth grader that has a failing grade in an effort to get them passing and to get as much credit as possible for high school graduation. So just a couple of the exciting things that are happening at North Layton Junior High in the academic realm.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to stand in front of you guys today and present a little bit about North Layton. We recognize that it takes a community to raise a child, and we're a vital part of that community. Our goal is the same goal of every one of our parents, and that's to raise a child that's a little bit better than our generation was. And as we work with that, we recognize that we have the responsibility to bring the community together for some of those things. And so we've worked with our military education team through Hill Air Force Base. Every day we have two busloads of students come from Hill Air Force Base, about 120 of our thousand kids come down from Hill Air Force Base. And those military-connected children come with a list of educational differences that other students in our school don't have. And so being able to work with our MET team and provide them with resources and some additional supports that maybe some of our other students don't need has been critical in helping our kids be supportive. Another area where we've been working with the community is our, we have a teen center in our junior high. It's not like the traditional high school teen center where there's a bunch of places for them to do laundry and some of those things. It's more about meeting those immediate needs that might not be, might not be met regularly. Our teen center's been open this year, and 425 of our students have gone through those doors. These students have received things like snacks, hygiene, reached out to family about community resources and put them in, put them in contact with different people. I had a student, I came into the office yesterday after doing my morning rounds, making sure that our building was ready to go for the day, and there was a young man sitting in the office, and I said to him, I said, "What's going on? Why are you sitting here?" And he said, "I can't go to class today." And I know this family very well. I've had the opportunity to teach a couple of their kids. He's got a twin brother in the building. He's got a couple older siblings in the building. His pair of pants, he's probably the fourth owner of that pair of pants. And if you know anything about little boys and clothes, if you're the fourth owner of a pair of Levi's, those are probably pretty hammered. And unfortunately, they had a huge rip in them, and he was worried that his classmates would be able to see his boxer shorts. So we were able to walk over to the teen center, find him some pants, get him on, get him on his way, and he was able to continue with the education that day. That's the critical, or that's the stuff that's happening in our teen center every day that's supporting our education. We have a wonderful community that is excited to help our students any way that they can. And it's been such a blessing to get out and work with them and see the good as we try to help all of our parents raise the next generation of leaders in our community.
Thank you so much for having us. I get to talk about our summer program, live sports, that we put together. And when Corby brought this to me, I was super excited. My boys play sports, and so I know how important it can be. And he let me run with it. And so we made it as big as we possibly could. It came out of Ohio State, and so we wanted to make it our own because we know how important it can be for these kids when they are transitioning from elementary school to come to junior high, and how big of a change that is. And so we wanted them to be part of our community. And so we put this sports program together, and I have something that I'm going to leave with you guys. But there are 50 different stories of kids that came through this program, and I'm going to tell you one of them. So we had a mom on our parent night that came in, and she pulled me aside and she said, "I'm worried." She had sent me an email. Her son had cerebral palsy or has cerebral palsy. She said, "I'm worried. In elementary school, he's been picked on a lot. He's dealt with a lot of bullying because kids don't want him on their team." And I said, "We are going to take care of him." And they had known one of our teachers, and he was going to be one of our counselors, and so she asked that we put him on that team, and we said, "Absolutely, of course." This kid, this kid in our final Olympic Games, when they were playing flag football and a game-winning pass came, and he swatted it down, and his entire team came and rallied around him and told this other, this other guy, "You ain't got nothing on my kid." It was incredible. And you could see in his face how excited he was, tears immediately because this kid had friends. And even though we had that experience in the summer, it hasn't stopped. This kid is part of our community now. And when he's in PE and he's playing basketball at lunch, he's got kids that rally around him every single day and protect him and make sure that he knows that he's got a place. This is just one story of many stories that have come out of live sports, from the girl that was afraid to step foot in our school to her showing her friends around on the first day of school. And so we're so proud of this. And like I said, I have more information for you, but I wanted to tell you the story because it means so much to us, and that's what we want. We want to make a difference in these kids' lives. Thank you.
Yeah, so also just want to put a plug in for nine eleven, also our Purple Star, our Purple Military Assembly. I feel like that's one thing that stands out, that we set the bar for that, and with our military engagement. And so for now, do y'all have any questions for us?
Mr. Gerard, go ahead.
I just have a comment. I love coming to North Layton Junior High. It's such a great school, and the culture there is amazing. And just wanted to say thank you for all the efforts that you're making. You're doing such a great job. And I just wanted to put a little note out there that you guys will be presenting at the Utah School Boards Association Conference in January, and we're super excited about that. And they're going to be talking about the live sports program. So that's really exciting, and you'll be able to share that with school districts from throughout our state. So we're very proud of you doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Board Members? Ms. Barber.
I love to see it. Love North Layton. It's super fun to be part of that school. I wasn't super familiar with the student success coaches. I mean, are they assigned to students? Do you have like an advisory time, or how is it structured?
Yeah, so how's it structured? So we hired two 5.9 individual, and the idea is, is part of our land trust fund is to support with graduation, making sure that our ninth graders, ninth graders are on track to graduate, on track for graduation when they move up to North Red. So our approach is to, as the end of the term, we focus on ninth grader. But we felt like as a school, we need to engage with our seventh graders to keep them on track, so we won't spend most of our time dealing with the ninth grader. So we proactive with seventh, eighth grader, but also we primarily support our ninth graders as well.
So that's great to hear.
Anything else, Mr. Robinson, and then Ms. Powell?
Just a comment. I was able to attend the one day with live sports, and it was so hot. And I looked around and nobody was hot except me. You know, I mean, I just looked at those kids, and they were playing and having such a good time. But the one comment would, you know, Ms. Bauer, you talked about that, those kids, particularly that young man. But the parents, I had a chance to talk to more than one parent, and I didn't talk to them and say, "What do you think?" or whatever. I just, you know, talked to them, introduced myself, and unsolicited, there's so much good that came into families. You know that better than we do. But to hear the parents and how grateful they were that their kids were involved. And you know, again, I come back to the weather. Kids, kids could have easily said, "This is just way too hot," you know? But they didn't, and they went from one activity to another. So I want to commend you. I think it was an absolute excellent opportunity for those kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
My question was just, I just wanted to hear a little bit more about the sports program, but maybe you guys are going to say more. That's all. I don't know much about it.
It was great. If you want to take, some Board Members went, then why don't you take a couple minutes and just kind of summarize how the day worked for these kids?
Like I said, she was the ringleader.
So what we did is it was four weeks, and the kids would come from nine to one. And some of the things that we thought would be an obstacle would include, or included transportation and food, which we took care of. And we had the Davis Education Foundation to thank for that. And so they bring our kids in, they bust them in, and we would split our day into four different rotations. So they would do three different sports, and then we would do a chalk talk, which is where they talked about the life skills that they gained through the program. So that's self-control, effort, teamwork, and social responsibility. And our wonderful military liaison, Francesca Suarez, ran that, and she was amazing at it. And so they would work with a teacher. So every group had a teacher that they went around with, and that was their counselor. And that's how every day ran. So we did three weeks, then we took the Fourth of July week off, and then we came back. And when we did, we did our Olympic Games, and that, I think, is when you were there. And it was, everyone competed against everyone, and the Greyhogs took the whole thing. But every team won at least one event. And so we did basketball, football, soccer, dance, volleyball, track. And they all just competed, and they came together as teams. They had a walkout song, they created flags, and we just brought all these kids together. And we use these sets, the social, self-control, effort, teamwork, and social responsibility, as a way to kind of teach them those life skills, but doing it through sports. And so we just hope to continue to do that in the years, yeah, as we move forward.
Just a really quick question. So do you use that to transition kids from sixth grade to seventh grade?
Yes. Yeah, we really wanted them to become part of our community in this more, in this fun way where they could, I mean, they all walked in with 50 friends, and they walked in knowing, you know, 12 of our, of our employees and stuff. So it was really good.
And like anybody can participate in that?
Just kids that were coming to North Layton. So we did have to turn away a couple kids that were going to go to different junior highs, but we really did open it to anybody who was interested.
Anyone in the junior high?
Yeah.
And did you guys fund this by like trust lands or GSSA?
The Davis Education Foundation really helped us out this year.
So mostly from the foundation?
Yeah, yeah.
Interesting. And you guys are planning on continuing this?
Yes.
And you have continuing foundation support?
I was like, "Mr. Eason, talk about money."
So I was, so there was a game prevention grant that was put out to the state, from the State Board of Education, and with Christie Blakeman out of Students and Family Resources, I asked gratefully, asked her to include live sports, the salary portion. Because that's the most of the cost for, to run the camp is to pay our teachers to be there. And so through that game prevention grant, we was able to receive 25K from the grant for the next three years to fund our teachers. But also there's, what we're going to do is fundraise for the curriculum, the light materials, and the equipment we have to rotate to help continue it.
Thank you.
And this goes along, and Heather answered this pretty much, but with Ms. Powell's question, because we all know how difficult it is that seventh grade and coming in as a seventh grader. So you touched on that they already had friends in the school. They also had teacher friends, and they could connect with that one or two or three caring adult. And that's just so important to all kids, but especially some of the graders coming into a different situation at junior high where they're nervous. So it was just amazing.
Thank you. I saw one more hand up down the line. Ms. Hogan?
Okay, well, I just wanted, before you guys left, I just wanted to say that I had the opportunity to go to the nine eleven assembly. So I just wanted to give a shout out to that because I think it's the only school that, that has an assembly for your eighth graders to start out their US history class. And it was so great to have somewhere to go that day and be part of a community. And I especially was touched that you invited the police officers and the military to be there too, to kind of recognize them. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Excellent. Well, we are so grateful for everything that's happening at North Layton Junior High. We're glad you could be here today and keep up the great work. We really appreciate what you're doing with your students, making a difference.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like we have a light agenda today, but I don't want anybody to be fooled. These are really significant items. And Dr. Toon is going to start out with our first item, which is really core to our work in student growth and achievement. And we're going to look at some test scores and outcomes and college readiness data that's been coming out.
Thank you, President Mumford, Vice President Gerard, Board Members, Superintendent Mr. Leffler. It's a, it's a pleasure to be here with you. I am happy to share this, this update with the board. Every year, we, we send a class of seniors off into the real world with diplomas and certifications and college credit and preparation and emotional health and strength and all the things that we've worked hard to develop in them. And we have some key indicators for what we look at in terms of their readiness to achieve at the next level. And so today, it's my pleasure to just share a few of those key indicators with you. And I apologize, somehow I navigated away from that. But I'll pull it up very shortly here, and then I'll be ready to go. Okay, I'm ready. Here we go. Okay, the first, this is the cumulative grade point average for all of the students, and they're accumulated through grades nine through 12. So this is the class of 2024 on the right, working back to the class of 2023 and the class of 2022. And so there's a very slight change from the previous class, and that just represents probably minor differences in the way that grades are being awarded to our senior class. In contrast to that, we have our concurrent enrollment courses. This is, now this data, this data point is slightly different in that the 2024 bar represents all concurrent enrollment courses taken by any student, not just the graduating class of 2024. But we see a significant increase to the tune of almost 600, which is about three times the increase that we had the previous year in our concurrent enrollment programming. And that's largely thanks to the work that we're doing in our high schools. Our universities are doing a great job at making these courses available and accessible, and we've had some recent legislation that helps move them a little bit toward programs that serve larger numbers of students in our, in our district. And so we're grateful for that and for the achievement of our students. This is the grade point average, and as we've increased the course offer, sorry, this is grade point average for those concurrent classes. If they were their own report card in and of themselves, this would be the student's college grade point average based on concurrent courses alone. So as you increase, as we increase by almost 600 additional courses, our achievement in those courses remained about the same, which we're really proud of. A lot of times when you cast a wider net, you see a little bit of a dip in the, in the outcome. So we're happy to see that. We'll see the same story here in our AP testing. About a hundred test, an increase in about 100 tests from the, just over 100 tests from the prior year. And that's a pattern that we've seen for the last two years. So really, truly, it's about 300 tests more than we've given over the two-years-ago mark. And I would say that our advanced placement and our concurrent enrollment programs are alive and well. I think this growth in these college-level coursework is extremely encouraging for us, extremely encouraging. Now that 5,286 does not represent all the tests taken in 2024. That's the graduating class of 2024, in the course of their nine, 12 career in our district, completed 5,286 tests. So that's, and they passed 77% of them, which was just an edge out on the 2023 class before them. Our ACT data is showing similar positive trends. And on the very far left is the composite measure, which is really the main college entry measure for most of our students as they seek college placement. Some of the sub-scores, the math and the English scores, they use that to determine placement in specific programs, like what level English they need to start at when they begin their college career. But we're happy to see an increase of a full decimal point over the prior year, and that's again over the prior year from there. So that little dip that we saw shortly after 2020 and some of the instructional adjustments that we had to make in that time, we are, we're back as a district. Where our achievement is strong, we see positive trends, and we're optimistic about the work that we have in store for our class of 2025. Probably one of the most important indicators that we have is our graduation rate. The state releases graduation rates based on the, the four-year graduating cohort. So a student who enrolls in our system at any point in grades nine through 12 is a part of our graduating cohort. And so if they disappeared during ninth grade and they didn't show up somewhere else in the state, they're a part of our cohort and will be considered a dropout or an unknown student at that point. And so our graduation rates are calculated very carefully by the State Board of Education after a period of time when seniors can do makeup work and things like that. So graduation day, we hand out diplomas to everyone who's completed. There are lots of kids who haven't yet completed at that point. They do their work over the summer. Many of them do it in the few days that follow graduation and just get it done. They have until September 30th, we have until September 30th to record graduation with the State Board of Education. So we barely submitted our graduation cohort responses on October 1st. And they released back some very preliminary data. This is not the official state graduation rate, but we're happy, but it's, it's, their graduation rate is going to be based on the data set that we're looking at here. So we're really confident that this will likely be, we're happy to see a big increase in our graduation rate, almost right up to our 2020 levels. And 2020 was maybe even artificially high because that last term of 2020 was a no-course-fail term for our district, you remember? So, so lots of students made it through that term that maybe otherwise wouldn't have. So again, overall, from a, from a, from the standpoint of where our students are, where they face, Davis School District continues to be at the top of the state in achieving, and the graduation rate's no exception. We will continue to dig into this as the state releases additional information. We'll look at subgroup information and make sure we understand it completely. But all, all of our indicators are looking extremely positive in terms of our outlook for readiness at the next level. And that's all I had for this particular presentation. President Mumford?
Thank you. Let's open it up before we shift to the next piece because Dr. Toon will stay up there for that. Are there any questions about any of this data or programs that you're seeing? Ms. Powell?
I have a couple. So on my news feed, I get, I've gotten a few articles that says there's rumors about AP tests being easier to pass.
there's rumors about AP tests being easier to pass. Can you speak to any of that?
I I can tell you what I think. I I don't have information from the College Board on any adjustments that they've made. Typically, what happens is they go through a norming process that involves readers. So teachers from around the country gather and they do a really intensive training on on kind of a standard normative way of determining what a student's score is based on what the student provided. The multiple choice section of the AP test is very strictly normed, and so I would anticipate that from year to year, you wouldn't see changes in easy to hard. What I don't know is whether they've adjusted the guidelines for the readers across the board. I I have, I would anticipate they might announce that if they made a significant change and we haven't seen any official announcement from AP. So my my presumption is is that is probably maybe just students' experiences that are being reported collectively perhaps, but I haven't seen anything official on that.
I just had another quick question. So when you, when you determine graduation rates, I know that there's kids who are about to not graduate frequently. They go in a summer program a couple of weeks and they just need to do kind of bare minimum requirements. Is there, I mean, I have a sense from some people that they might be passing, but maybe not necessarily really passing like based on somebody who wouldn't be going through that program. Do you have a comment on that?
I can, I can. I mean, sometimes credit recovery looks and feels different from original credit. And that's, that's just the reality of it. And and credit recovery by and large will be accelerated to a degree. Students will have an opportunity to do that quicker. Maybe without the same level of scrutiny that they might have in a in a face to face classroom. I will say that every credit that we honor in that setting does come from an accredited institution. So even if it's a packet from an organization outside the school district or a credit from another online school or something, we verify accreditation prior to awarding that credit.
Yeah, just a comment on that. One of the, and I I I have a lot of interest in that space because I think, I think we we you could potentially do a student a disservice. I know that there are outside organizations that are accredited that I think can sometimes do students disservice. I think the standard that 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 we want to work towards and that we certainly have in some places, I appreciate the work that Syracuse High was doing a number of years ago, where they would identify rather than, you know, retake an entire course, because a student that has a, has failed a course, you can do fifty percent of the work and fail a course. And so the idea would be to target the standards that where they're short on and and spend their their time and energy meeting those standards so that the student can move on. And so in that case, we do want to expedite it because, you know, we we want to entice young people to not spend their entire summer like they they're in fifth term of of school. But we can, we can get, we can get the best instruction if we can spend a little bit of energy on the front end and find out, you know, where their gaps are and and just really train them on their gaps and test them. We're doing that in lots of pockets. We're not doing that everywhere. Sometimes they just do the whole course. It is, I also know, because I've, I've, I've had family members that are, that are, that have done credit recovery. And it goes fast because they're in one course versus, you know, eight courses and their homework is all day long, they're doing that one course. So it is, it is much quicker regardless of how it's done.
Thank you. John?
Dr. Toon, so you know, what we see is it's impressive to me that we've seen reports in the past. The one slide, the last one on graduation rates, most of what we saw was focused on college readiness, which again is a topic. But once we get to graduation rates, there will come a time where we see the subgroups within our, I mean, we aggregate and see the the different groups in our system and where we're at with those as well.
Yes.
This is reflective of all groups.
The whole student body in in one collective, in one collective group. When the state publishes likely the last week of November, first week of December is about when they usually publish. They'll publish disaggregated results by race, ethnicity group, by disability group and by several other demographic factors. We're, we're pretty intentional about that set. Mr. Zerbakin and I pour over those data every year. It's been a place where we've really excelled in the past and in recent years have had some opportunities where we look at it and and say we might need to get back to where we're in that top of the state driver's seat where we were a few years back. We're not there right now. I don't know about this group where we will be, but that that will come when the state publishes.
And I I I think all of us appreciate the the energy and efforts that's put forth for every kid, but I think we all recognize that there could be challenges within. You know, some kids needing a different motivation than other kids and whatever. So I just express my gratitude as a school board member for all the work that you and Dr. Linford and others are doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Barber?
I had a comment and then a question. My first comment, it goes right along with what Board Member Robinson said. I think a lot of times we think of graduation rates or we think of graduation as a whole as, you know, our nine high schools and everybody shows up and they have that formal graduation and and that's graduation. And I learned a lot just this year. I I attended Davis-Kennex graduation. That was eye opening for me to just see a different way adult ed graduation, which was really impacting, really impactful for me to see that. And then Mountain High's graduation and we just had Mountain High's fall graduation this week. Is that this week? Last week? So I'm assuming Mountain High's, that class made the October first deadline.
So so all of the students in all of our specialized programs, Davis-Kennex, Mountain High, we have several. There's some students at Vista Center who are still on the, in the cohort model for graduation. All of those students are reflected in these numbers as a district. Typically, when we publish school by school data, if the N size is less than forty, we don't publish to preserve student anonymity. And so sometimes you might see, you know, maybe there won't be a published result for a particular program that's got a really small number of students, but those students are definitely rolled into our district average. Our district overall counts.
So that was both my, 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 my main comment on that, sorry, is just that it was fun to see all the different ways that we serve students outside of these, you know, traditional graduations. And it was just encouraging for me to see that. And, you know, it's more than just a number when you're seeing someone whose life is changed because they were able to graduate or get a little extra help, extra time, whatever it took.
No question. And I'll, I'll deflect much of that to to my colleague, Mr. Zerbakin, who's worked in some of those programs and really has adopted the mentality of let's find a way, let's create a path for students and get them to the finish line, no matter what it takes.
That's definitely reflected. Then my next question. I mean, I know there's lots of different indicators for college readiness. It seems like the ACT is kind of the one, would you say that's the most telling indicator for college readiness for our students? I mean, we hear so much about it.
So if if you look at ACT, that is the one indicator which every student participates in. Because our AP data, we're only drawing the students who take AP classes, same thing with concurrent enrollment data. So ACT graduation rate in a way, but we have a lot of kids who graduate who might not be thinking college, but the ACT moving upward is an indicator of that. I think recent announcement from Weaver State University, Davis Tech, Ogden Weaver Tech for direct admissions programs, the University of Utah has been really intentional about this. I think we're gonna see our higher education friends come to the table with not just having the pathway there, but putting students in the pathway when we get there. So the short answer, yes, I think ACT is probably our best student body wide indicator of college preparation.
But do you see it becoming less of an inhibiting factor on those automatic enrollments because they don't depend on the ACT?
For some institutions, the ACT is is not a consideration in the student's placement. Like students can, students can enroll at Weaver State University regardless of their ACT. ACT becomes at that point a scholarship mechanism as well as a placement in particular program. So like they might start math at the ten fifty level or the ten ten level, depending on what their ACT math score is.
Interesting. And then my last question, I learned this because I was a substitute secretary at a high school this last week or two weeks ago.
Awesome.
And I learned a lot, especially about ACT preparation. So the ACT is changing?
Yeah, it's.
There was a lot of questions. I had no answers, zero.
So there's a lot of rumors about the ACT and some of them are rumors and some of them are facts. Mostly what we see is pretty consistently ACT looking and feeling the way it has in the past. There's a writing section that is optional for districts. Some do them, some don't. We have our statewide implementation of the ACT for all juniors every year. And that's where most of our students take it. Well, I should say this, most of our students take it once or twice in addition to that junior day as well. The structure of the test probably won't change massively, but we will see as universities tend, trend away from using that as an absolute admission requirement, we will likely see ACT modify some of their structures to meet that.
Interesting.
Whatever the university might want to do with their data.
Okay, we don't know exactly.
No.
Interesting.
No, we we plan on having an ACT year this year that looks a lot like prior ACT years.
Good job. Thank you.
Mr. Gerard? And what, remind me, what does our stance, our district stance on the writing portion?
We don't, we don't administer the writing during the statewide testing.
You don't do it.
Yeah, and leave it up to students if they decide to do it when they register on their own.
Yeah, and and that's been for a while, hasn't it?
Yeah, we've never really done.
Okay.
Thank you. I was excited to see the, sometimes we worry that when we increase our CE that maybe our other programs will diminish. And we're seeing AP and CE kind of growing simultaneously, which I think is great for students that want those extra challenge. And just like some perspective is ACT will come and go. There was literally a study released yesterday where colleges are seeing that the shift to GPA, they've seen less, you know, they put the emphasis on GPA for their placements and saw that that wasn't a good indicator because there's so much grade inflation on a national level and they're may lean back in towards test taking at some point. So I think we just keep our eye on on the focus of preparing our students to be successful and the tests will come and go and and we'll adapt.
That too. I I'm really grateful for the state, the statewide implementation of the ACT. I think this is something that has been good for our kids since we started and would hope that we continue to do that until the day when the universities say, never mind about it altogether. It's it's a great experience for our kids.
It gives us a good baseline to to know what we're doing.
My my own teenage children disagree, but I think.
All children disagree.
Me too. Ms. Hogan, did you have a question before we wrap up?
This has to do with graduation. I I'm just curious. I know we've had an increase of migrant population from other countries. And I'm just wondering if you could explain that process when somebody comes and and is put into our high schools, how do we go about getting them ready for graduation?
I'll, I'll maybe do my best. And then if John needs to, if Mr. Zerbakin needs to correct me, he can. I think on initial placement, our students come and they do a transcript review. And in most cases, that transcript is available, even if it comes from another country outside of the United States. In the cases that it's not available, that becomes tricky. We have to coordinate with with the student and make individual placements as as best as we can. What we don't want is we don't want a student coming, you know, at the end of their junior year to our schools to be at an automatic, you know, we don't want a dropout sentence to be placed on that student by virtue of the transcript review. So it's a really intentional process of basically granting credit from their prior school experience from wherever they came from. He said I did a good job, so that's good.
Okay, thank you. Great. Let's go ahead and shift to our last agenda item then. This falls into the area, I think, lots of things. It's listed here under employees because it has a huge impact on our teachers and our staffs in our schools. But it it also affects our student achievement and the overall culture in our school district. So we're gonna talk about enrollment, FTE ratios and class sizes. It's something that comes up in the fall as, you know, people check their kids into school and have different class sizes sometimes than they anticipate. So we wanted to look at the October first data. And the superintendent is prepared to share that today.
Thank you, President Mumford, Vice President Gerard, Honorable Board, thank you for the opportunity to present some information. I've I've said this to a few of you. Tonight, we want to present as much information as we can within a short timeframe. So we've curated that, I think, in the best way to, you know, in our best estimation of how to get it in front of you. And then hopefully this will drive more questions and drive, drive the board, you know, into into a one direction or another to maybe explore next steps. So to to begin, I'm gonna turn the time, am I turning the time to Steve Snow? I'll turn the time to Steve Snow and then we'll, we'll, we'll take turns. You'll, you'll hear from elementary directors. You'll hear from Logan, you'll hear from Steve Snow, you'll hear from myself. And 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 as we go, you know, obviously feel free to ask questions. But know that there will be a lot of information and that and our, and our hope tonight will be that your questions won't necessarily be about making decisions about next steps because we think that needs to happen over maybe a longer period of time and and won't. We won't necessarily have enough data just tonight. So, Mr. Snow?
Thank you, Dr. Linford. Let's see if I can write this. I want to show you the calendar. Well, we have about four or five sections to look at the staffing. It begins the January through December timeframe. That's all year. So in that timeframe, we're meeting with cities talking about their new developments and the makeup of those developments. We also look at what type of developments. Is it single family dwelling? Is it apartments or, you know, condos, whatever? We look at that because it's a different percentage of students that will come from, depending on which housing class. Then in the fall range of October through January, we start gathering the October one enrollment information. We look at burfs for kindergarten. Well, we know that burfs are the best predictor for who's coming five years from now. We just don't know which house they live in. The three year history, we we will take the last three years and then try to get three more years at school by school. Then we'll adjust the data for any new growth or declines that we see in the neighborhoods. Next one is February through April. Now we're talking projection time. We have what has happened and we're trying to predict who's coming in the fall. So this is get out your crystal ball and make your best guess and and don't mess it up. And we, we meet several times. I want to particularly in elementary, it's different for secondary because we don't look every single class in secondary. That'd be pretty hard. But in elementary, we look at every single classroom. Just wanted you to hear that. Every single class when we're doing this. The we need to look at how the, we give out staffing for a whole school, not per classroom. We'll give it to the principal to make a decision after they've looked at their particular areas. And then when we're done and we've looked at the areas of concern at each school, then we'll send out the letters to the principals and here's your total staffing. And now in the summertime is when the rubber starts to meet the road and we start to see who's coming to school. We don't know kindergartners until they show up. We have a guess based on the burfs, but we don't know which school or which neighborhood they're in. And then when they start coming in the summer, then we we start feeling pressure from the principal saying, you know, I told you guys it was gonna be more than this. And we hear that from about one hundred percent of principals. And so we'll monitor and we look at, we start making reports school by school. And we look at each class and what I'll show you, or Tracy will show you in a minute, is this red blue sheet where she she watches and the, all the elementary directors watch school by school, class by class. And if there's any bulges, then we have a set aside pot different from the budget of the FTE and we can administer those out to where we think is the most needed. And they'll work with the superintendent when they do that. Okay, so here are the the live burfs for the last twelve years. And you'll notice that there is decline now, and we've talked about this previously. We've got, the the latest information is for twenty three, that we just received that information like last month. And there was a tiny increase, so it's not all bad, but it is going down. And when we take those burfs, I want to show you how we look the next five years. If you look at two thousand eleven, there was fifty six hundred burfs and we had forty nine hundred kindergartners from that cohort. So we also look at the percentage that we hold from the the babies that were born in the county. These are mothers who live in the county. And then how many come to kindergarten? So the last number that we had was two thousand nineteen was five thousand ninety eight, which is almost seven hundred less over that timeframe. And then we receive about eight hundred less of students because our percentage is going down of what we're holding. And then we receive about 800 less of students because our percentage is going down of what we're holding. So now we have, there's four more years of data which we'll project into our kindergartens for the next four years. Okay, here's the total enrollment for the school district. And that first number is 2010. Then the blue line is, is today's number. And you'll see that there's a wave happening and this is just our county. And it appears that in 2034, according to the demographers at the University of Utah, that that would be the bottom and then start growing back from then. So we'll want to be paring back our services, the cost of our services because we're going to have less money to spend based on those students. And now for the rest of this, I believe Ms. Robbins will be here.
We've got a couple of questions while you're still there. I know you were ready to go sit down.
Okay, are you, is, are you going to sit down and let Tracy? Because, yeah, so I just wanted to point this out because Mr. Snow told me before the meeting that this might be his last presentation to the school board. He's hoping. Now, I don't know if that's going to come true, but if it is, I just want to say thank you and you're amazing at this stuff. So just appreciate all your work. And if, yeah, Superintendent Linford's going to make you stand up here again. And then we'll have to say it again, but you're really good at this, so thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Steve, I think there are still a couple of questions though.
Mine was easy.
And then Ms. Hogan.
Okay, so you stated that we, different types of new housing projects produce different percentages of students. Is this something that we're going to have to reconsider as our housing options are changing? I, the reason I'm asking this, I mean, I live in a high-growth area and we've got a development that is, there's some drama happening in my city about this development and it's going to be mostly townhomes and we have people that are saying that townhomes are going to be the new, like, single-family homes. That that's what this next generation, that's what they're going to prefer. Which I don't know that I, I would like to see the data on that statement actually because I know my adult children would prefer to live in a single-family detached home, not a townhome. But if that truly is the case, do we need to look at our, our percentages and maybe make different, I guess, guesses when we're trying to decide new schools, all, just all of those things?
I appreciate that question. Thank you. I, I feel like the, in the short term, no, the answer would be no. In the long term, maybe in 30 years from now, potentially. But in short term, because of this decline in burfs, there is, in total, there's going to be less kids. Whether, wherever they live, they're, they're just going to, they're not there. So it, and we also look at in migration, so people moving into the state, but that's mostly happening in the Utah County area. So I, we have looked, what we do is we, we take a certain area and as it is built, then we'll start watching that unit and see how the kids appear. So and for instance, at Swan Lakes, do you know that in Lake, and where the golf course was? So we watched that and the first three or four years, there was very few students. And we were expecting a lot and we didn't get any. And so Ellison Park is, remained as a low enrollment. But in the last two years, now we're seeing, you know, a few more. It grows after people have been there a while or people move in with, with kids, but at first there was not very many.
Thank you. Ms. Hogan?
Mine's really easy. The last slide that was just up there about the enrollment, is that for, yes, that one, is that for just our district? Sorry, I missed that, or is that the whole state? So this is just our district.
And I think superintendent's going to show you a statewide graph in a while.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Ms. Barber, did you have a question?
No.
Okay.
Not yet.
Sounds good. Anything down to this end?
I had a quick question. So this projection, did you say it's provided by people at University of Utah?
Well, it's based on their projections for the county as a whole. And then they also have some projections about school-wide, school age. And so I applied those together to get this graph.
Oh, okay, okay. And my other question was.
That's from the Kim Garner Institute. I mean, they're, they're the gold standard for, anyway.
Gotcha. And then really quick, quick question. So I saw like at the beginning of the graph, it was like, well, the earlier one, you said our retention rate, right? Showed our retention rate was like 91% at the beginning and now it's all the way down to like just below 80%.
I think the biggest effect of that is charter schools.
That's what I was going to say because charter school enrollment is around 10%.
And then another one and another one and, and the rate would go down, but since the pandemic, there's other factors as well.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Robbins, you're up.
I was going to say Steve might want to stay right close for the rest of us. The next slide I want to share with you is our initial staffing. So as Steve stated just a little bit earlier, we start this discussion in mid, mid, probably beginning of spring, mid-spring. And the first thing that we look at is this initial staff, staffing spreadsheet that he provides for us, which will list out the schools, their original or previous approved staffing, their initial staffing as they've projected the numbers. And then you will see as we go down and we allocate that, then we kind of just watch schools as the, as the student enrollment rolls over and new kindergarten students come. Any additional staffing that is, as the school directors talk to the different school leaders, we make note of, just kind of a, a running analysis, basically, because we know we have limited funds. So then at that point, we just kind of make note and as we continue to meet with the planning department and Stephen and Nathan Lee, then that's when we talk about adding or reducing, either using some of the reserves or moving FTE around based on what we know. This next slide is, okay, this, this slide is really interesting because what we do at this point is we pretend we're making suggested classes. So if you look on the right side of that graph, you'll see under suggested class sizes, those would be ideal. If we gave this particular school, because of the formulas that Steve and his team have put in, if we gave that school the approved or suggested FTE, that's what those class sizes would kind of fall out to be. The interesting thing on this particular school is they were funded for 15 FTE when, when it came down to the actual enrollment number. At that point, that number goes to the school leader and the school leader can determine based on their class sizes of how that would allocate. This particular leader decided to do, if you'll notice, third grade, to do two teachers in third grade. And that would have put their class sizes at about 30 kids. And that was to take that down from 16 to 15. And they're going to talk about splits, they're going to talk about large class sizes and the impact of that, to stay with their allocate, their, their originally allocated FTE amount. Okay? On this one, you'll notice here, this is another interesting graph I want to share with you. If you look at the grade levels down the side, the projected enrollments are what was done back in the spring. When we look at the second column that you see outlined in red, that's what actually came in by grade levels. So we rerun those fluctuated numbers of suggested class sizes and we re-determine if we have actually met our distributed FTE allotment or if we need to reconsider either pulling back or giving more based on what was actually came in. Those numbers are usually received around July 1st when we do the rollover. It allows school principals to be able to load, class load listings and then us and the planning department to actually pull up next year's class list or projected class lists.
Just, can I ask you a question? So that column outlined in red, is that your July number or is that your October number?
That's July.
Okay. So.
The black is July, the red is October, corrected.
So the principal's going off of this July number and that's when the class sizes are all distributed and that's.
Yeah, yeah.
It was always confusing to me as a parent because I would hear this October date and I'm like, what does that mean? Like, school's been in session a month at that point or more.
Right, so you can see that overall they increased by 15 students.
Okay.
From the July to the, to the October count.
10 students total.
Oh, so.
Am I looking at that right?
Thank you.
And then, but their FTE, they stayed at with the 16 that they had projected initially, but their class sizes just had to bump up a little bit.
Right.
Okay.
Tim?
Tracy, just, just for FYI, the, the October 1 count actually drives our funding.
Yeah.
So the state looks at prior year enrollment and then they compare October 1 last year to October 1 this year and that's the growth calculation that comes into our funding. So the October 1 date doesn't necessarily drive class size as much because we have to do that obviously before school starts, but it's a big funding number.
I think that, anyways, that's helpful now. I wish I realized that earlier. But, okay, my second question on this. So if I'm looking at this right, when you talk about third grade, because they were concerned that there would be, they needed three FTE?
Mm-hmm. That's what we projected that they do with that FTE. He decided to put two there and, and do something different in one of the other grade levels.
Okay.
And that we leave at the, at the site-based decision.
Yeah, yeah. But what, what's their ratio? Is that the 15.5?
The 15, 16, 16, isn't it?
16.
Oh.
They got 16 FTE.
So the graphing suggested, this happens to be Reading Elementary, one of Ruth Ann's schools, they actually received 15 FTE. So he had to cut one, which it came from third grade.
Okay.
Is where he decided to pull it from, which resulted in those classes being divided between the 61, which was about 30 and 31 students.
Okay. And the suggested, the graphing suggested that 26.875 number that we hear a lot.
Yes.
That's our recommended.
Yes.
Class size ratio, obviously.
Off of the 415.
But that's based off of the 415?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Will you advance that for? All right, now that we've talked about how those were distributed, Ruth Ann's going to talk about the impact. Okay?
Right, well, Reading is actually a really good example of, they could have, they, they could have done a split had the numbers worked out the way that you would like to for a split. But they didn't because they had 66 third, oh, thanks, okay. They had 66 third graders, but at the beginning of the year, or they didn't, it's every kid that moved in, you know, when you have a high grade level, they're all, then they move in that same grade level. Anyway, he, we looked, he looked at it doing a split, but the numbers in second grade were high and the numbers in fourth grade were high and so it would make no sense. It wouldn't, it wouldn't fix any problems. So he is supporting with aides and they're, they just have 33 in their third grade classes, which isn't ideal, but it's just what we work with, with what we have. So I'll get back to what I really came to talk about, which is how do we consider splits? Well, if a class size is very, or a, a grade level has large numbers, then we look at the earlier, the one before and the one after to see if they're smaller. And so we can take, combine those, one of the classes into, one from each class, some students into one class. So that takes away one teacher and gives a smaller grade level for, which sometimes works and sometimes doesn't as in third, with the third grade. Or it, it, we could see that two adjacent grade levels are really small and the classes are super small, so we, they'll combine to make a reasonable class sizes. And when the, the, we call it a combination or a split class. And the, so I'm just going to talk about some of the, not pros and cons, just the conditions of those classes. So in a split class, we like to take kids that are independent learners in each grade level and they are usually, sometimes they're just the, the kids that are better academically and that, that is, hurts the other classes because you look at those kids a lot as examples and, and then that you have those calming influences in the class. But you can't teach two curriculums if you've got kids that are not behaved or can't work independently. And, but unfortunately, sometimes the split classes don't have that advantage and it is, it's hard. It can be very hard. So because you've got kids with behaviors, and students are, so in split classrooms, students are with, they're either older kids or younger kids. And when my daughter was in a split class and when she was in fifth grade, she really liked it because she was with sixth graders and then she said sixth grade was a breeze because there's no way you're not going to pick up what they're doing in the other grade level. But she enjoyed her split class. And the teachers, you need to have, it's a strain on the teachers because they were teaching two curriculums and they need a lot of support from their, from their teams. So say it's a second, third split, the second grade teachers need to support and the third grade teachers need to support because say the second grade says, I'll take your, your second graders and teach math. So you have a, you just keep your third graders and teach math so that they, you have a smaller group to teach to. And, or the, the independent workers are working while the teacher's teaching to the other grade level. And they, it, one nice thing is that, is that the teachers own all the students and that's the goal with PLCs. But a harder thing is, is the teachers have to PLC with two different groups. And then again, with the content is you're teaching two curriculums. And the teacher that teaches a split class needs to be highly organized and have excellent classroom management skills. And usually the combination class will make a decent-sized class, 12 of one grade level, 12 of another. That's kind of the, that's the standard, but it doesn't always work that way. I know there's a school right now that has 30 kids in their split class and that, that's just a lot of kids. And the non-split classes then end up with kids that may not, if, if you, if you have a wonderful, like, a miracle group of kids that are all really good at my, being good students, then it doesn't matter how you split the classrooms, but you might have a class that has more behaviors because of the split. And then, then the students are with their same-age peers. When they're in a combination, they can, it's, it's nice, I think, to make friends with other grade levels kids. And it is back to the non-split classroom. It's easier to teach one curriculum and it's easier to PLC with one team, one grade level team. But sometimes it's a little harder for the teachers on the team to own all the students. When I say that, like, they're all our students and we teach all our students. And you've, you need excellent classroom management skills no matter what grade you're teaching, but sometimes if you've just got one class of, of all the same grade level, it's a little easier to let that slip. And the smaller classes are nice if it works out that you, that it evens out the classes by doing a split. So that is, I'm, Bridgette, or Ms. Gerard.
Okay, so I, I know, I was just thinking about other special considerations for those teachers that teach the split level classes. I know you mentioned extra support from both grade level teams of teachers. That spawned another question too. Do we give any other rewards for teaching split level class?
Not currently, but that's something you've spoken and we've talked about.
But more than that, do, do teachers typically volunteer to do that? Do the principals ask them, think, oh, this teacher would be good at this? How does that usually work?
Usually the, the principal thinks, you'll be good at that, would you please do it? Sometimes there, there are some teachers who like to teach splits.
Really?
I, I can't, I can't name one off the top of my head.
I can't think of it, no.
But I know there have been some that say, I will teach the split. Whether they like it or not, they volunteer. Because you always have those people that look at the greater good and
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. That's great. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm just trying to think of, you're in the classroom and you're the teacher of the split class. Do you like teach this curriculum for a minute and then have them start something? And then you go over and teach the other side? Is that kinda how this works?
Yes, yeah. Or that you ask of someone, will you take my class, my sixth graders for science while I teach fifth grade science?
Okay. And do these classes usually have an aide?
Yes, we do support. And back to the reading, that we supported, we gave them money for aides. Plus he already budgeted in aides for his, his TSSA funds. And they have, it's called Win Time. They have aides who do the SIPs program. So they also go out for that. So they, they have a lot of support. But it still doesn't make it super easy to have a large classes like that. And obviously I went back to not a split class, having large class sizes. But, um, we give, we do give aides for, um, split classes too.
Okay. So we give aides for split classes and then are we also giving aides for the larger classes when we can't do a split?
Yes.
Okay. The same sort of supports?
Yeah. Well, and a lot of principals will, um, budget that in their TSSA and TSSP. So, and then title schools, they can afford, like, to buy another FTE. And, and they, they look.
They do that.
They, they, they're always planning. And some schools, there are a couple of schools that out of their TSSA bought an extra FTE.
Michelle, go ahead.
Um, this is super helpful. Thank you. I had, had no idea the complexity of class sizes until you look at it at this level. So thank you for the help. My question is about, I mean, we talked about TAs to support the split classes and I'm glad you had that. But I'm really glad you had on the slide, to the side about the non-split classrooms. Because a lot of times what I've observed is those are tricky. Those are really hard. Because like you said, there's behavior challenges and I've kinda seen them still be a little bit bigger class sizes. A lot of times the parents are not wanting their kids in the, the
Oh, yeah. Well, there's a whole other
There's, there's so many layers.
Yeah, you have to call the parents to make sure, which I always did, to make sure they were okay. And then you also have to really get buy-in from the other teachers. And sometimes they say, yes, we'll help to get somebody to say they'll do the split. And then not so helpful during the school year. And then hard conversations ensue and it's not fun.
So that was my question is, I mean, when we see these splits here, are we saying TA for the split class? But we also need help for those other, kinda like the, the non-split class. Do they get support as well? I mean, they might have higher classes, hot class sizes. It might be behavior or it's just, it's hard for all of, I think the whole grade level that's affected.
Well, they would, I, I, my assumption is yes.
Okay.
I, I would think they wouldn't just buy, they wouldn't just have TAs for
Just for the
one class.
Just the one class.
But they would.
I think it's just, you know, you look at it at, like, how does this affect the entire PLC? Because they're all, they're all gonna have an impact on it. And then there's other things that I'm learning to consider. It's not on here, but there's a lot of fallout because it's like this matrix of trying to allocate FTE that's super hard. And I know I brought this case up to a couple of people. I have a third grader in a very particularly challenging class size dynamic. So her teacher, second year teacher is teaching third grade in the morning, first grade in the afternoon. And that's particularly challenging. It's not gonna fall in one of these slides as a split class or the non-split. Well, I guess she is the non-split class, but that's really hard for her, two curriculums that are not even adjacent. So I mean, I'm just trying to think of ways that we can support a teacher putting hard classes, hard positions like that.
Yeah. Well, usually the grade level teams will step up and really help them.
And like reading interventions and thinking, especially for, you know, a class that has
Yeah. Well, every school has a, a literacy coach and they help.
Yeah. It's tricky. Yeah. This is really good to see. Thank you.
Good, good discussions and maybe jot down notes as we're talking, like, things you want more, um, you know, discussion on later. We can follow up with the director and, um, you know, we can think pros and cons of these scenarios 'cause it affects, like, what do you do next year if you had a split this year? So there's all these consequences anytime we make a decision. Dr. Lindford's gonna take the next one.
I'm gonna insert myself.
Just one comment before.
Oh, yeah, please.
As, I think as a school board, the thing we need to never side of is the fact that after the legislative session, we're determining budgets.
Yeah.
And, and every year, we talk about teacher assistance, but our school directors can only do what they can do with the money that is allocated. So I, I don't think, and I'm not ever assuming that we overlook that 'cause it's a huge priority for all of us. But, but the questions and some of the direction comes back to us in relationship to what our priorities are when we look at those, you know, needs. Uh, and, you know, that's gonna be an ongoing thing. And I think it's, you know, it behooves us again as board members in discussions with legislators of the increased funding for education to allow us to take funding to help in the individual classroom. So I think it's just a very, very critical part of what we do.
I mean, I, I, we'll continue, but I wanted to insert myself a little bit. We're, we're early in this presentation and there's a lot of information. And I think you'll receive other, other data that'll actually inform your thinking about these splits and the size of classes that will, you know, anyway, that, that'll shape some of your questions. So I would, I would say, we're all gonna be here and it may be that your questions even change. And some of the questions you've already asked would even be asked in a different way with the rest of the information as well.
So my task is just to cat, is to inform you how do you build a split from a building level? Um, and really, there's two methods to look at it. I guess that's the There we go. It's that one. Um, so the, the first method, one, one method is to choose middle to high students. When I say that, I'm talking about academic achievement. Typically, your middle to high students do a little bit better independent work-wise, as you saw with Ruth Ann. Um, independent work is gonna be a necessity for that classroom. So you, you choose middle to high from both grade levels. And so yes, you have very distinct curriculums that you have to teach. Um, but you can see the pros and cons there. So you take a balance of both grade levels. Um, oftentimes you try and keep it even. It's, sometimes that's not necessary if you have to take more kids from one class to lower those, from one grade to lower those class sizes. But like, like we've said, they, they all need to be able to work independently. Uh, the pro of this method is that there's less time needed for remediation, which takes quite a bit of time. And the, the school supports for remediation are always gonna be there, but there's always an expectation for the teacher to be able to remediate in the classroom. So this, this model lowers the remediation of necessity for that teacher and allows her to really focus on the, the tier one instruction. However, that's also, that, we, we assume that that's gonna mean that students aren't able to work as independently. Are not going to be in this classroom and so they're gonna be in the other classrooms. And as we've said, that, that takes the brunt. Um, the team takes the brunt of that one. Uh, so the other method is to, from your lower, your lower grade, let's say second grade as an example. You take your higher achieving students in second grade and then you take your lower achieving students in third grade. Theoretically, talking about, okay, there's gonna be some overlap there as far as knowledge goes. Maybe this is a reteach, maybe this is new, but I should be able to combine some of those skill sets to save, to save time. Again, you still try and balance your grade levels as much as, as much as possible. Um, the con to the, so obviously the pro would be that we can save some time in the planning, the curriculum, maybe even some teaching of cer- certain concepts. Um, but the con is that we, we now are gonna have remediation efforts. And, and students that take remediation take a good chunk of time from, in any classroom. And, and so that's time that's gonna have to be required for, for the classroom teacher there. Um, how do you support it? A lot of these have already been answered through your questions. So I'll just, I'll just skim through them really quickly. Um, you know, your TA support, have, in some models, you have a TA that's working during independent time with one grade level while the teacher's doing that tier one instruction. Maybe they're running them through some of those computer adaptive programs, reteaching your tier two. Uh, that, that's, that's gonna be, uh, one way to support them. Uh, you, as principals, you have to align the recesses and the lunches. So, 'cause we want our, second, although we're, we're happy to build community, uh, community between those grade levels, you really need to make sure that our third graders have time with their third grade peers and second grade have time with their second grade peers. So that takes a little scheduling efforts. Um, other grade, uh, other grade teachers, as you've talked, talked about here, you know, possibly rotations where someone's gonna take the social study curriculum off the plate of the teacher completely and just teach with the bigger class sizes during that component throughout the week. Um, so, so as they don't need to focus on those, those types of ideas, whether that I, I bring up social studies because that's typically not taught every day. And so that's one that's a little easier to do that rotation model on those things. Um, and then funding, this is, uh, this is something that we received questions about this summer, which is, which is awesome. Um, you know, TSSA, TSSP, uh, the, the issues with those is that the principal has to plan in advance. Those plans are made, as you know, you read those plans well before we get to July and August when sometimes we're seeing these bulges and that money may already be allocated for something else. Um, and now can we adjust, do those things? Yeah, in some cases, in some cases we can. Uh, so that, so in those situations where you're trying to provide, plan ahead and provide TA support for the grade level um, that's going to have a split or the teacher that's gonna have a split. Uh, you, you don't, if, if it's not anticipated at the time or if there's not as much enrollment and then we have to do a split because of that, that's not anticipated. So off, uh, that's, that's where we'll use that red-blue sheet, talk to the principals, work with them to, from district funds. Uh, if we're able to scrape some together, um, and provide other supports as you see there. But typically that comes mid to late summer. Any questions on that?
All right. We're gonna zip through these next ones. Oh, thank you very much. All right. Elementary acceptable ranges. These are, these are what you're gonna see in two more slides. What indicates a red and a blue. Our range for each grade level you'll notice is a little bit smaller in our K through two. And then it gradually increases on the bottom end and gradually increases on the top end. But that is your student range that causes us to reflect. Okay? Next one. Here's the blue and sheet, blue and, uh, red sheet. This is kind of our bible. We go down kindergarten first, second, third, fourth, all the way down. You'll notice that blues. Don't pay attention to those singletons, the fives, the twos, the twos, the fours. Those are individual students that they pulled out as identified students that may be going to, uh, resource. And so we don't count those. We count the full classes. But let's go to Buffalo Point. See how twenty-eight is red? We would be concerned. That would draw attention. Why, why aren't those two classes balanced more? What, why is one class twenty-eight and the other one's twenty-four? It causes us to have some questions. And then we jump on the phone with the principals and start looking at, is this something that we can do a split in? Is this something that is, you've already thought through? Or do we need to provide some financial support? Okay? But you can see that all the way up. This is a really interesting, um, graph too, that I think you'll find very, uh, interesting. Eighty-four point one percent of our students have class sizes or schools between twenty and thirty students. Eight point eight percent of them are nineteen to fourteen students in a class. And seven percent of our classes have thirty-one to thirty-seven students in a class. Okay? So I think we did pretty good.
Yeah. That's awesome.
Okay. My job was to figure out, how much money does it take to fix all this? Depending on how Okay. So, like we just looked at, ninety-three percent of our classes have thirty students or less. That's not, that's not terrible. But those seven percents are the ones that we hear about and you guys hear about, um, from the constituents. So what do we do? How much would it cost to get rid of those? So what we did is we looked at each of the class sizes and said, if we were to get rid of all the splits and we were to get rid of the school-funded FTEs, meanings that schools could use their trust lands money and their TSSA money in different ways instead of having to buy a teacher, how much would it cost to get rid of all the thirty-seven classes? So for us to do that, we would need thirty-eight more teachers and say, remember, that's to get rid of the splits. We have twenty-two splits in our district right now. And we have twenty-one FTE that are bought by schools. So those numbers are included in these class size ratios that you just saw. So if we were to take those out and then get rid of the thirty-seven classes, we would need thirty, three point eight million dollars to do that. Um, just to kinda put all of this in perspective, a one percent cost of living adjustment for all of our employees in our district is five million dollars. So when we talk about raises, you know, when you go through negotiations, five million dollars is about what it costs to do one percent for all of our employees. You can keep going down that list. Obviously, it gets more expensive as we try to get rid of more. We have more classes at thirty than we have at thirty-seven, so that's why it's nine and a half million to get rid of that many, to get rid of all the thirty classes, um, or ninety-five teachers. So there's two issues we have to think about here. One is, where do we find ninety-five teachers? And secondly, where do we put ninety-five teachers? Cause we don't have ninety-five classrooms. Now, maybe you can put two teachers in the same classroom. Um, that would lower class size in a different way than what we think of traditionally. The next question was, let's look at our overall ratio. So you saw the ratio of twenty-six point eight seven five. What if we said, we wanna make that twenty-five or twenty-two or twenty? Or the research would suggest, you know, until you get down to eighteen, and Dan's gonna talk a lot about this, maybe class size doesn't have that big of an effect until you really can get down into those lower numbers. So we ran what those would cost. To change to twenty-five, that nine point two million dollars, twenty-two, twenty-seven million dollars or two hundred and seventy-three FTE. To get down to twenty, we need four hundred and twenty-three or forty-two million dollars. And if we go to eighteen, I'm gonna reinstate Craig Carter as the business administrator 'cause I don't know where we're gonna find sixty million dollars and six hundred teachers. That just gives you a perspective of what it would take. And this is just elementary. We're not looking at secondary. This is just elementary school. What would it take to do something like that to get our class sizes this low? So in the past, we've taken the, we've taken the approach, both in twenty-ten or twenty-eleven when the board raised taxes and they got an additional seventy FTE, which you saw in that one chart, that we give to elementary school directors. So they apply the ratio and then they have the seventy FTE that we got through a TNT hearing and they apply that as needed in the elementary schools. We often tell our current directors, imagine what this would be like if you didn't have the seventy FTE that the board went through to get back in two thousand and twelve. And so when we look at these numbers, we just wanted to provide a perspective of what it takes to get to certain places. And that's why we've done the targeted class size. Cause targeted class size, we can put a million dollars in a pot which buys around eleven teachers. And then when the directors run out of FTE and they've done the best they can, but we still have some bulges in some places, then they can go to superintendent and say, could we look at some of your FTE and could we put it here? And they make a case to superintendent and he allocates those FTEs out. So one way to do it cost-effectively is we could increase superintendent's pot, uh, give him some more FTE to allocate. But you can see, changing ratios as a whole becomes very expensive very quickly, um, depending on what we wanna do. So just wanted to review those numbers. Any questions on those?
Yeah, just really quick. So is there any way to, um, keep some of those twenty-two splits? And, um, also still encourage schools to use their TSSA and trust land funds? So it wouldn't quite be as expensive to reduce, you know, so we don't get thirty-seven classes.
That would be an option, 'cause we only have three thirty-seven classes.
Right.
And most of those are a result of the immersion program because we have lower classes in the immersion. By the time they get to sixth grade, we have a small class size in that immersion, which means sometimes English classes. And that's no, no judgment on the immersion program. It's just strict numbers, the way that they come out. We could look at that. The, the question that was brought up in our meeting as we looked at that was, would principals then hold out? And say, well, I could use my money, but I'm gonna wait, I'm gonna wait, I'm gonna wait 'cause maybe Ruth Ann's gonna come through and she's gonna give me that FTE. And so we don't know how schools would react to that if they knew that maybe someday they're gonna come through. Would they hold out to the very end, not use their money until the last, the last second?
As a director, someone that allocated, uh, FTE for six years and as a principal on the receiving end, it's not, I mean, even outside of, I would be a fool if I'm a principal to, to do anything but load a class at thirty-seven and then let the director come in. The, that puts the district in the position of picking winners and losers. You know, that school is gonna do a split and those parents and that community will deal with the split. And that school, we're gonna give extra funding for because we don't want them to have And that school, we're gonna give extra funding for, because we don't want them to have to do a split. I think that is a really tough situation, where we keep splits and then fund bulges. Cause that is literally a choice at the school level, with the same, pretty much the same exact circumstances. Again, I think that puts the district in a tough spot. And a principal, doing right with their own budget, should always then, if the district's going to come in and take care of bulges, the, the principal should be, should, you know, run the class at 37, knowing that they'll get that extra support.
Thank you. So kind of an equity thing to be considering, and are we supplanting different budgets? Mr. R.
Well, my question was concerning what Superintendent Lindford just talked about. So, so the process that happens is, the principals are autonomous on that. This is their decision on how they put together these class sizes. And then it's the job of the directors, if they see that there might be a problem, then they go to the principal and work with the principal to fix those.
And that's why this red, blue sheet comes handy.
Uh-huh, when they see the red, then, then they contact the principal and then they kind of work together to solve those. But, but the principals are mainly responsible for putting together these class sizes.
President Muffet, I have a really quick question. When does the red, blue sheet come out? Is that a July 1st thing?
It's constant. So, starting in July, they're running it on a regular basis. Because our, Nate, Nate and Steve will run enrollment, um, every day. Once we get to the middle of July, they're running it every day, because we have new students enrolling. And so they're looking at it, the, the interesting part, and we didn't show this, if you look at a graph of how many students we have from July 1st to October 1, it goes like this. And on the first day of school, it's the highest possible count, because we have students that didn't show up, but they're still in our rolls. And so principals are saying, hey, I need more, I need more FTE, I need more FTE, which they very well may need. But then by October 1, it just falls off. And it's because students can stay in our system for 10 days, and then once they don't show up for 10 days, we have to drop them. And so, it's interesting to see, you know, principals are reacting to that number, right, the first day of school. And that's probably the highest number that we're, that's not really true. And when we get to October 1, that's kind of more of the real enrollment, but by then, we have to do the staffing, obviously.
That's helpful. I had a principal tell me, I don't know how the district does it, but they predict really well. They're almost always more accurate than the principal themselves.
That would be our directors and Steve and Nate scrutinizing every school and every class.
Can I ask one more? So I'm, I am interested to hear about what was done in 2012 by the board to get 70 FTE. Can you tell me that process, how that worked?
Yes, they just decided to go through truth and taxation for eight and a half million dollars to raise teachers for the, for K-6. And we kind of look at, you'll notice in the ratios that Tracy showed you, the acceptable ranges are much smaller in kindergarten than they are in sixth grade. And so that's, the reason we can do that is because of that 70 FTE. So it was just simply going to our accounting, say, we wanna lower class sizes in elementary school. So the board passed the, the, uh, the will to go to TNT. We went to TNT and the board voted to accept that. And so that eight, that eight and a half million became part of our permanent budget.
But it reflects more of that targeted philosophy versus changing the ratio system-wide.
Yes, we could have lowered the ratio by one student, district-wide, but it was much more effective to apply it in our bulges.
Okay. Thank you.
As we balance all these things, the finances, the structure, everything like that, the question about return on investment always comes up. What is the, what, what's the effect of a large class or a split class on student discipline outcomes, on academic outcomes? And I'm gonna try and tackle that. One of the difficulties we have, I'm gonna try really hard to not be obnoxious while I tackle that too. And the reason why I say that is because there's so much behind it. Looking at two different groups of students and deciding which group is a higher achieving group is super nuanced. And almost always, there's some other inherent differences in the one group compared to the other group. It'd be like saying, there's a school over here and a school over there, and for some reason, these kids are just consistently reading at higher levels than this school over here. And, and to isolate that to a single trigger, like a split class or a large class is difficult. So we're gonna use, and I'll, like I said, I'm gonna try really hard not to be annoying on this, but, uh, we, we did some statistical controls in this, um, called an ANOVA. It's, it's a, basically what it does is it's a statistical control for variance. And so all the variance that happens in student outcomes and student discipline, um, is statistically controlled in these models using kind of normative references throughout populations of students. So, i- if you look at this chart here, if, this is made up data, first of all. This is just to illustrate very clearly kind of what we're looking at here. And then I'll show similar charts with real data, so you can kind of understand what's happening. The small, this is a 95% confidence interval, and the blue dot is the average. So the small class has a lower average, whatever the outcome is, than the typical sized class. And the 95% confidence interval in those two groups are distinct. So what that means is after considering all of the different randomization of students, if I randomly choose a kid from a typical class and I randomly choose a kid from a small class, probably with like 95% certainty, the typical kid's gonna have higher achieving outcomes than the, than the kid from the small class. Okay? So that distinction of like confidence intervals is what we're looking for in an analysis of variance. Okay, that's, that's grossly oversimplified. But it's, um, but it's, but really what, what we're saying is, are we confident that the difference that we're observing in whatever we're measuring is because of the difference in class size, or is it some other thing that's already inherent in the populations of the students? In this case, we're confident statistically that the difference that we observe is because of class size. Right? If we compare the small class to the large class, we're not confident of that. Because I could randomly select a kid from the small class and randomly select a kid from the large class, and they could have the exact same achievement. And so this would be an example where those two groups would not be considered different. Now, even though the small class average is higher than the large class average, because of the way the population wraps around that average, there's, there's no statistical difference between those two groups. So then, so that's the first question, is are we confident that there's a difference that's due to that thing, small class size or splits or whatever? Then there's the question of how big is the difference? Because we can be confident that there's a difference, but what really matters is kind of how big that difference is. So that's the difference between the two averages. And this is another, just kind of made up data set. This is a normed population, uh, you know, you've seen normal, normal curves and things like that. This purple population would be the typical class, and this orange population would be the, um, the students from the small class. Now, the area under the curve is kind of like a Venn diagram a little bit. Okay? So there's like the stuff that's in the purple population, but not in both. And then there's stuff that's in the orange population, but not in both, and then there's the stuff that's in both. So if I randomly choose a kid from the purple population, I, that kid is gonna be way far to the right from a randomly selected kid from this population, generally speaking. So that, what that means, we already determined that those are statistically confident. This kind of a relationship means that not only are we statistically confident, but there's a big spread between them. So, we know the difference is because of class size, and the difference is huge. It's like 10 points, or six points, or eight points, or whatever that spread between the low, the lower population and the higher population is. So we're answering two questions. Is the difference due with confidence to the class size? Or the split model? And how big is the difference? Okay, so we're gonna dive into data. So this is, uh, average disciplinary incidences in split classes and in not split classes. In the schools, uh, where, and grades where we do split classes. And we have, you can see that on average, there's .38 disciplinary incidences per kid in a not split class and .31 disciplinary incidences in a split class. Well, that might make sense, because of what Doug said. They're designing those split classes to mitigate some of the other challenges of split classes, and so they might have imbalanced classrooms. And in reality, that's what we have, because when we look at the statistical significance of that, right over here, there's no statistical significant difference. So, if somebody says, yeah, but behaviors are way worse in, in split classes, nope, they're not. We just don't, we, we're not observing that at the district level. Now, there's always a microcosm, and there's always a consideration of, of individual circumstances, and they're probably speaking from experience that matters. But are, there is no statistical difference between split and not split, not split classes when it comes to discipline. Um, this is a measure of reading gains from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. And we observe the same thing, that there is no statistical difference between the not split classes and the split classes in reading gains. So you can kind of visualize that in this like overlapping region between these two confidence intervals here. It's not a true requirement, like they don't have to be absolutely distinct. But this .04, right here, is squarely in the 95% region for the split class. So, I could randomly choose a kid from both groups and they could have equivalent scores. Right? Which means we don't consider those to be different achieving groups in reading. In math, we see a little bit of a different story. In math, we see our gains, uh, higher in our not split classes than we do in our split classes. And so, you can see that visually, and then the statistical test play that out as well. So the chart on the right just kind of is the confirmation from the ANOVA analysis that goes in the background behind all this. So now, now that we know that I could randomly select a kid from both groups, and I know that pretty likely I'm gonna have this kid be higher than this kid, the, the kid from the not split class is gonna have higher math gains, well, how much higher? Right? So now we have to ask, is that a difference that's, that's nominal? Is it significant? Is it big? Um, so that is a difference of .15 standard deviation. So it's like, it's 15 one hundredths of a standard deviation, which looks like this in reality. So the purple population is the, uh, not split class, and they're slightly to the right, which means they're slightly higher achieving. The orange population is the split class, and they're slightly to the left. That is a very slight difference. So if I choose a kid from under the purple chart, and I choose a kid from under the orange chart, the distance between those two kids left to right is pretty small. Right? So we have different performing groups, and they're differently performing, but with a, a pretty small gap between them. So we're confident that they're different, and we're confident that they're minimally different, I would say. That's how we would interpret that information. So, that's the first statistical difference that we saw was in math gains, uh, when we look at grade level splits. So we, no, no, no difference in discipline, no difference in reading, minimal difference in, but significant difference in math gains. Now let's switch over and look at, um, class sizes. So the same methodology exists here, except for now, we're looking at three different comparisons. We're looking at small classes compared to typical classes, small classes compared to large classes, and typical classes compared to large classes. So this chart summarizes where we are here. We, we see in this particular case with discipline, we see that, um, small classes are statistically equivalent to typical classes, discipline. Large classes are statistically equivalent to typical classes. We can't tell the difference between discipline outcomes in those two settings. But we can tell a difference between small classes and large classes. And it's a little counterintuitive actually, because our small classes have more discipline incidences. Right? But that's, that's how the numbers are playing out. How much more is the question? Right? So let's, it, it's a difference of .05 incidences per student. So, five one hundredths of, uh, somebody getting sent to the principal office per kid, which, when we look at the populations, is almost nothing. Right? So the populations are different, but they're so marginally different that it's, that it's nominal. So, reading gains, there's no difference between small, typical, or large classrooms when it comes to reading gains, statistically. And in math, we have the same thing. There's no difference between small, typical, and large classes. Now, that doesn't mean that math is just as easy to teach to a large class as it is to a small class, or reading, or vice versa. That's, that's just strictly student achievement outcomes are not observably different between small, typical, and large. Now, we, for this definition, have used our blue-red chart thresholds to define small and large. So the same spreadsheet that you've looked at a few times, those cut scores by grade level are where we've said, those classes we would consider to be small ones, those classes we'd consider to be large ones. Just to summarize real quick, the first three rows are analyzing discipline, reading, and math outcomes, comparing split versus non-split classes. The one observable difference we see is in math outcomes with non-split classes having slightly higher math gains than split classes. And when we look at class size, the one, the one notable difference that we observe is in discipline with small classes having, I would say, nominally higher discipline outcomes. So when you're thinking return on investment, and I'm not trying to put words in your, in your mind on this, it, we have to consider all the things, all the emotional things, all the workload things, all, everything. That's not playing out here, but when it comes down to a, a pure outcomes-based analysis, we don't see marked significant differences between our thresholds of small, typical, and large, nor do we see marked significant differences when we look at split versus non-split. Superintendent?
Thank you, Dr. Toon. Okay, uh, next slide. I'm, I'm hoping to tee up a little bit of the national research. Obviously, uh, nationally, we, we see studies that are much, uh, more in-depth, much more robust. Um, I wanna, I wanna, okay, so this thing, oh, okay, I can go over here, okay. So this, I wanna, you know, too many words on this slide, but I wanna hit on this, the STAR study. This is kind of the, the, the ultimate, uh, class size study. It did find, um, that there, there was, that, you know, there was a significant difference in, uh, in student achievement as it relates to class size. Smaller, students in smaller classes outperformed, uh, students in larger classes by an increase that's equivalent to about three months of extra schooling four years later. So they maintained that, that, that extra knowledge longer. But, the challenge that we have in Utah is, is, is just the numbers that you see there. They were, they were comparing classes of 22 to classes of 15, and we're never doing that. And so I appreciate what, what, uh, Dr. Toon presented, and it is essentially, it, it mirrors what we see across the country over time and, and around the world. The similar studies in Texas, Israel, um, showed similar benefits for similar class sizes. We're talking about, uh, below 17 in these studies for small class sizes. And we're talking about, um, but in the other studies, no one's really been able to reproduce. I think it's because they haven't had the robust nature of the Tennessee one. I think you probably would get similar results, but no one's really produced the kind of structure and, and the awesomeness of that 1980s study, to be honest. But we've also seen other fairly good studies show zero significance, as, uh, Dr. Toon's information showed. And again, I think he acknowledged at the beginning, very limited study within our school district, based on the, you know, the, the data that we can grab. Uh, overall significant reductions, if you reduce classes by seven, 10 students. We don't know what it's like if you reduce them from class sizes of 30 to class sizes of 23. There's not a, a lot there, but it, it gets to this. And this is, this is the variable, the most important variable in all of the research. And that's that we're talking about, the constant variable is one teacher. And so, how well can that one teacher get to? So tier one instruction, we know is critical. That's, that's the, that's the whole class instruction that we spend most of our energy on. Everywhere in education, but especially in Utah, where we have large class sizes. I think we're the, I truly believe we're the best there is in the state of Utah, and, and even better in Davis School District at tier one instruction, because of the size of our classes. The challenge comes when you have, uh, what is a typical class size, certainly in secondary, where the class size is doubled from what those, you know, those low class size norms are. 17, we're a little closer to 34 in our, in our core secondary courses, and in our, in our, the concerning elementary courses, about that eight, about 8%. And so, the challenge is, and it's very practical. Classes start becoming a challenge when we get into the tier two instruction. That means the teacher needs to work with smaller groups that have similar challenges as students, uh, similar learning deficits. Once we get into tier two, that teacher, that singular teacher can only spread so thin. And it's a very practical way of looking at this. The challenge with large classes is that teacher's not getting to individual kids. Well, then you add other variables, like discipline, behavior issues, other things, kids, just light behavior issues, chats in the back, kids, friends being off task, all those things, that one teacher has a harder time controlling. We posit that TAs can fill in the gap for those kinds of practical things, right? That can stop the side conversations, can help with, with some of the discipline, behavior issues, and can even help when you need to get to that tier two instruction to break, break down into smaller groups. One of the reasons that you see, um, in the research, that there doesn't seem to be a significant learning difference between small and large classrooms in the majority of studies, unless you get significantly lower. And even then, it's, it's much more pronounced in underrepresented and underserved student groups. Um, in, in regular, uh, the Um, in in regular uh the more mainstream classes where students come ready to learn like we see in most of our classes in in Davis County compared to the nation, um, you see very little difference. And and that that really comes down to because in small classes, discipline goes up sometimes. We see that across the nation. Protocols, practices, the things you have to rely on with a large class, best practice things about structures and the way you deliver curriculum actually becomes stronger. What we found, it becomes stronger when your classes, when you're forced to manage all this and students learn protocols. It gets it it can become a little bit loose when, you know, you have twelve kids and you're gonna you're gonna work, you know, you don't have you don't have to develop procedures with the same, I'll say desperation. So we we use this, this is a good snapshot. This is effect size. Hattie is, he's a he's a special researcher. He does a meta-analysis and he he, you know, his last update, he did, he has a more recent update, but I think this is the best format and 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 the effect sizes haven't really changed much. Um, if you look at the effect size, this is at the top end of his list. These are things that we talk about, what what Dr. Toon was talking about. It's really hard to narrow in on why this class is outperforming this class. But the research tells us the reason why this class outperforms this class is almost always that teacher in the front of the classroom and the methodologies. And then the programs that surround, the training that surround, the the approaches that we take. Um, this is where reducing class size lands. This is where it lands on that scale of effect size for student learning. Okay? We're only talking about student learning. Now let's talk about how my wife feels about class size. And let's talk about how our teachers feel and what it does for morale and what it does for feeling like, oh, and you add behaviors to that. We asked a group of teachers, I said, okay, if I added four kids to your already big class, you're at a class of thirty and I add four kids to that class, but I to let you choose the three kids that I take away. So I'm gonna increase the overall amount by three, but I'm gonna take away or four, but I'm gonna take away three students for for a negative increase still of four. And I'll replace those three students with whoever you choose. Almost all teachers, all the teachers that we've talked to in our very unscientific straw poll, they're like, yeah, yeah. It's all about behaviors. You you send four angels, you can you can give me a class of forty. And so what we start seeing in the research is we 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 see when we bring the language to the table, all teachers have access to the surveys that we use for negotiations, right? They choose raises over every time over class size. We've never brought to the table, what if we reduce class size by ten? We've never brought that to the table. It's always a nominal number, it's always one or two, you know, at best. So I wanna point this out. This is US News and World Report. It ranked two years in a row now, Utah is ranked number one. We hear this a lot from the legislature. What we don't hear a lot is the highest rated section of our ranking is education. Utah is ranked number one. Economy's pretty good, but it's not as good as our education. So we know we're we're strong in spite of being, if not the lowest, second from the bottom in funding. There's our class size in our nation. The biggest class sizes in our nation. Yet we're ranked number two. And again, this is from Kim Gardner. So we know, back to the point, we know it affects teacher morale. These are the factors that influence Utah educators' decisions to leave their position. Emotional burnout, that's class size. That's maybe more than class size, it's the discipline that comes with more students. It's the management aspect of more students. For me, as an English teacher, and I know we're not talking about secondary, you add you add thirty kids to my load across eight classes and how many hours did you just add in reading and grading and those things? Significant, it's significant. Um, if you look at factors that influence Utah educators uh to stay in their position, number one is pay increase. But number three is smaller class sizes. So there's no question, if you ask the educators, yeah, big class sizes are a nightmare. What if we can reduce it by two or give you a raise? Give me a raise every time. This is uh retention rates by school districts. I love where Davis is on this. Obviously, we can do better. But everyone to the left of us that's better than us is in a a geographical walled-off area. There the options to teach in other places are extremely limited. We are not. They have lots of options in Davis County and and they do choose to stay here. Um, this is uh, you know, looking ahead, this really reflects what we see in the state. Um, it reflects what Tim already showed you. Uh, the state's predicted. I don't know how they're predicting growth in ten years from now, it's certainly not birth rate. I you know, I don't know where that comes from, but the Kim Gardner Institute um sees the same thing. I wanna, you know, kinda put a bow on what I'm talking about. Uh, and this is what I this is what I face, cuz I'm I'm the guy that handles the bulge money, right? Um, I know our teachers really feel the the heat when their classes grow beyond what is our, again, those reds and blues, those are our numbers. Those are not based on national research. National research, that whole sheet would be red. We're no different than other other districts in Utah. Over time, this year's no different than any other year here in Davis County. This is not a problem that's worsening. I will say that behaviors appear to be worsening, certainly reports of worse behavior are are is tough as they've ever been, and that's also across the state. So uh the challenge we that we kinda have is is really looking at the best way to tackle this, knowing that the effect on learning is probably nominal. And and we don't know what it would look like if we got over forty or something like that. Hopefully, we'll never we'll never have to grapple with that. But when we're talking about, you know, three or four kids in either direction of what we think is the best class size, we don't see big learning differences, and that's our primary mission. But to meet our primary mission, teachers have to feel like they're effective. The number one thing was teacher efficacy, right? That that it, there's a lot of elements to that, but at the end of the day, it's do teachers and teams of teachers believe that the work they do, their preparation, their skills, all of those things matter for student learning, that they're the most important thing for student learning and that they believe all students can learn. That's that's the piece that we spend a ton of energy on because we're gonna get huge returns on that. And all of those things between teacher collective teacher efficacy and lowering class sizes are all important. But we're spending significant energy, that's why you see high reliability schools and things that that force us into measuring all of these aspects that that have the highest effect size on learning. So I think we have to do both, and I think it's before the board to consider ways to do both. Certainly to 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 add aid in those spaces that we don't have good answers for. Splits aren't gonna solve it. We we try to, we try to add extra teachers to all the spaces where splits won't solve it. Um, and we just have to run larger class sizes. So we need to add a teacher or the right kind of TAs. We do something special with TAs in our district, we do train our TAs. We do meet that national standard that meets that research level that says TAs make a a big difference if you train them appropriately. But even then, sometimes teachers don't know what to, we need to train a teacher how to use a TA. There's a lot of work that goes into to mitigating some of those things. We've spoken a lot, and I think I think all the way down the road, anyone that's presented is is available to answer questions. If you wanna drill into some of the some of the details, we'll do our best to answer. But again, I hope that this has teed up further conversation in areas that you'd like us to present deeper and better information as you make decisions about funding.
Thank you, Mr. Gerard. First of all, I want to thank all of you for the math lesson, especially Dr. Toon. The statistics principles are popping back in my mind. But I did just have one question on something you just said, Superintendent Lindford. So um are we uh unique in the training that we do for our teachers assistants?
Um, lot lots of lots of districts do do training. Um, very few do the kind of uh teacher assistant training that we do.
In-depth, okay, that's good to know.
And again, that's that's also something that's fairly new uh to the profession where you're seeing TAs as a as a really viable, a good viable option, especially for that in that tier two space and that student control space.
So so who's doing that training? Just the teacher that they're with or do they have special training?
They have special training. Logan, do you wanna?
Kelly Mudrow's department has a team assigned to TA training and they run a series of courses. Uh, some are optional, um, some of them are kind of part of onboarding processes that we have. And the future state of this is gonna be some kind of certification type verification of competencies and completions as they move through them.
That's good to know, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment on that?
Yeah.
This is just a comment on the A or the TA training. I just talked to a couple of TAs who said that it was, of course, Kelly, it was there, it was really fun, but it helped, it was really effective and how they actually do more than just kinda like babysit little classes. They actually are helping with interventions that they hadn't been trained on before, so huge. I I think that's gonna see huge results, so thank you on that.
I think I saw a picture on that or an article now.
Yeah.
Awesome. I think great questions, a lot to process is because this is a complex um thing. As Mr. Robinson pointed out before he had to slip out, obviously, the board's role lies a lot in resource allocation and putting the supports in place so that the administration can manage a lot of these processes and support our educators. So let's um kind of, did you have a question before? Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I had to go out and cough. Um, just my only question was, it looked like there was um kind of a, I don't know if it's just a recommendation or kinda what you would like for each grade level, how many kids in the class. So is that something that um we require them to stay within or is there still some leeway there depending on the school and the situation?
So the 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 and we're, I think, I think we're primarily just talking about the red, the red, when a class turns red, that's when it gets above it. All the blue, I think we're okay with, that means they're below our threshold. And you saw a lot of blue on those on the on the spreadsheet. So when when it comes to red, that's where the conversation starts. Hey, you're at red, what is your plan here? Sometimes uh because again, the principals are making decisions based on their FTE. No, we'll probably use some uh some discretionary funds, work with our community council on on trust lands or whatever they're going to maybe use to support. But that there's also a point within the logistics of that, if the school has limited options or if they're maybe the size of the school or or whatever, that's where school directors uh step in, and I'm speaking for them. Um, but that's where schools and directors step in, and that's where we step in with resources. Uh, we mentioned, you know, we added FTE, I mean, we added like one point six million in extra FTE and and some of that came in the form of TAs and and various kinds of TA help. If it's something they can't solve on their own, we try to solve it for them. And that's really where the 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 bulge money that that we call it, that I keep, I keep a million dollars. And then I also just occasionally say, well, we're out of money. Uh, Craig, can I have more money? And that's where the point six of that one point six came in, right? So and and there, I I've never gone to a bean counter, I've never gone to a money guy that thinks about money that doesn't think about kids first, really. I've I've never had, I've never had Craig go, great, you know? He just says, yeah, yeah, we'll we'll get that happen. But no, it comes out of, that's ongoing money, you know, that doesn't, that's, we made an ongoing decision with that money.
Okay, so let's plan for then a kind of a little bit of a follow-up discussion. The superintendent can kinda curate questions as those are coming through in the next few weeks. And then um my thought would be at that point, if we feel like there's some recommendations or action that could go to a policy or to finance committee or a a work group that the superintendent wants to assemble about class sizes.
Can I end with some good news?
Yes.
Uh, today, hot off the presses, some of you've heard this. We have three state champions and one runner-up in Unified Sports. And that's Woods Cross Blues, Bountiful Red Hawks, Bountiful Reds, and Northridge High was the runner-up.
That's so awesome.
That is great news. We will end with that and so proud of our Unified Sports and all the the kids that work with them. I love their peer mentors and their coaches and teachers, it's such a great program. Um, Board, we need a uh motion to go into a closed session for the purposes of property and for litigation. Um, I'll take a motion.
I'll move that we um go into a closed session for the purposes of property and litigation. I'll second that.
Thank you. So a motion from Ms. Gerard, a second from Ms. Price. We'll roll call starting with Ms. Barber.
Yes.
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 Thank you. That concludes our meeting.
Yeah, everybody's super excited about this at the conference.
Thank you.
Yeah, they're gonna be great.
Yeah, teacher associations serve it. Survey service. That said,
That's the best poll ever.
I know.
Yeah.
My wife gets it, she's not a member.
It's awesome.
So yeah, I think everyone. But but you still, with a survey, you're going for a significant sample. My assumption is they're sampling.